Hi, good evening. My name is Ron Gadoff. I'm the president of the Council of Homeowners Associations here in Farmington Hills. And in conjunction with the League of Women Voters and the Committee to Improve Voter Participation, we are glad to convene here tonight the candidate forum for the Farmington Public School District candidates that are running to for, what is it, a six-year?
Six-year term.
Chair on the board. So without much ado, I will pass you to Christine Allen from the League of Women Voters. She will read you the rules of the evening, and she'll moderate the whole evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Welcome to this forum for the Farmington Public School District Board election. Today is September 24th, 2024. This forum will be featuring the five candidates who have filed for the Farmington Public School District. Vote for not more than two for a six-year term. Sponsor this forum are the League of Women Voters Oakland Area, the Council of Homeowners Association, and the Committee to Increase Voter Participation. My name is Christine Allen. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters Oakland Area. I am not a resident of this district. The League of Women Voters is a trusted national nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that has a great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to visit our website at l w v o a dot o r g. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are of the candidates, and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format of this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters and the other sponsors. We ask that the audience remain silent during the forum. Please turn off all cell phones and other electronic devices. Please do not record or take photographs. Thank you. We ask that candidates answer the questions with their views only and not interrupt another candidate. The questions are asked to all candidates and do not single out any one candidate. All candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screened for duplication and appropriateness by Julie Finn and Cindy Peltonen. Pages are Susie Brown, Rose Kristoff, Mike Allen, and Karen Bardas. They will be circulating with pen and pencils or paper and pencils for your questions. Please turn your questions into the pages. The format is as follows. All candidates will be given one and a half minute for opening statements in alphabetical order. Closing statements will be one and a half minutes in reverse order. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to answer each question in rotation until unless extended by the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer questions. Our timer is Diana Piles. The candidates here tonight are T.R. Carr, Danielle DePue, Claudia Heinrich, and Thomas Hall. Also running is Vanessa Gwynn. We will begin the one and a half-minute opening statements with Mr. Carr. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the Council of Homeowners Association, the League of Women Voters for making this forum possible. Am I running for school board? That's the first question that people always ask. I would begin by stating that I have a lifetime commitment to public education. I'm a retired academic serving at university level. My wife is a retired school psychologist. Our son teaches at Oakland University. So you might say that public education is an integral part of our DNA. We're committed to public education. We're committed to quality education. One thing sometimes people ask me is what are my goals for being on the Board of Education? I would defer that answer to a little bit later on, but say my first priority. My first priority is to be able to be an effective member of the Board of Education. I'll be one of seven members. So that means I have to be able to build a relationship with other members on the board. I don't know, there are two of us will be elected, so I don't know who's going to be elected. So my goal, you know, my ultimate priority is to build a relationship so that I can work with the entire board as a team. You know, one thing that I think the board would benefit from is a team spirit, being able to work together. And that's what I would bring to the Board of Education. My commitment is a commitment to respect. My commitment is a desire to work together and to build a cohesive, effective team for the residents, the students of Farmington Public Schools. Thank you.
Mrs. DePue.
Good evening. My name is Danielle, and I'm running for public school board because I believe it's a crucial time for our educators and families to prepare children with the skills and knowledge needed to adapt to our rapidly changing world. We need leaders who can challenge the existing policies and procedures to drive results for our students while managing relationships with multiple stakeholders. With a passion for my community and education, I aim to use my skills and experience for the benefit of our community. My professional background in analysis, strategic planning, and cross-functional collaboration, combined with my master's in public administration, uniquely qualifies me for this role. I believe that by implementing strategies based on transparency and good data, we can advocate for the support of our teachers and students that they need to achieve the desired outcomes. Thank you.
Mrs. Heinrich.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to meet with you tonight. I'm running for reelection because I recognize the importance of experienced leadership as we are tasked in selecting a new superintendent to continue the gains the district is making in raising student achievement, meeting the needs of all students, and making Farmington Public Schools a premier school district. I'm a 49-year resident of Farmington Hills. My four children are all graduates of Farmington High School, and three of my grandchildren currently attend Farmington Schools. As a retired educator with a 40-year career teaching high school and college mathematics, I bring to the board table an understanding of the importance of allowing our teachers to focus on teaching and learning. I also recognize that teachers need time, resources, and support in the work they are doing to meet the needs of all learners. In the four years I have served on the board, I have worked collaboratively with fellow board members to set goals and focus on that focus on student achievement. I'm currently treasurer and chair of the Finance Committee, and I've also served as vice president for two years. In addition, I serve on the Board of Directors for the Oakland County School Board Association. My experience will be valuable in leading the district to continue the work we are doing to ensure that every student feels welcome, respected, and has the support and resources needed to develop their passions and interests as they prepare for their future. Thank you.
Mr. Hall.
Hello. My name is Thomas Hall. I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and also the Council of Homeowners. The reason why that I am running for school board is because my deep passion for the well-being of our children and my commitment to building a stronger, more transparent, and thriving school system. As a longtime resident, parent, and advocate in this community, I know firsthand how to critically create a safe, supportive, and high-achieving environment for every student. My goals are, my priorities are achievement, safety, and transparency. We need that in our times right now in which that our children are the focus of everything that we do in this school district. I have been the president of Farmington since for 2005. I also am a member and president of the Farmington African-American Parent Network, called FAPN for short, supporting all students through tutoring, SAT/ACT boot camps, financial literacy workshops, college fairs, and advocacy for parents and students. I also was a coach for the YMCA, Farmington Hills Caustic Center, and Jewish Community Center in West Bloomfield. Together, we make our schools even stronger and continue building a bright future for our students.
Thank you very much. We will begin the question segment of our forum. We're going to jump into one of the tough questions right away. School shootings have become an unfortunate reality for our times. How satisfied are you with the current practices? What else needs to be done? And we'll start with Mr. Carr.
School safety is a major issue for us in the public sector. I have a lot of experience as mayor of Hazelwood back in Missouri dealing with safety. I think one of the issues that we have to be aware of is we want to build a positive relationship of trust with school resource officers that are interacting with students on a daily basis. I think we have to be able to be effective in looking at mental health issues that are affecting students today. Students today face significant pressures that we did not face back in the day. And students having difficulty being able to cope and to be able to express their dissatisfaction without making the immediate step to school violence. So I'd say what we need to do is to explore options. Now, I am not exactly sure exactly the strategies that are followed by Farmington Public Schools. One of the things I would do if I'm on the board is spend some time in dialogue with the superintendent, with the staff, and with the police in Farmington, Farmington Hills, talking about what are we doing and what can we do better? I do not come with a series of preordained steps, priorities that we can implement, but rather an attitude of saying, what can we do? How can we do it better? And I think we can make our schools safe.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mrs. DePue?
I do believe that I've seen a lot of practices that have come out in the last several years that Farmington and Farmington area schools have taken in that are really great measures as far as building safety and processes that are put in place if issues arise. But I do agree that there needs to be more of a focus on the mental health aspects, the community aspects, the engagement with students, teachers, and other staff that creates that community that supports the students and everyone else that's engaged in that process of learning day to day so that the communication of their wants, needs, desires, frustrations, all of those things are seen, felt, heard, and that those things that exist for them each day when they come into school are transmuted across all of the different district areas so that everyone's kind of on the same page. Sometimes we see that one school deals with these things better than others, certain districts, certain states, et cetera. I believe that learning practices can be shared and that everyone can come on to the same page for how to approach those things. I do believe that, like I said, that we've made some really great measures. There's always work to be done, I believe, in continuous improvement. So that's definitely something that I think that we should look into.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich.
Yeah, since I've been on the board, we've been addressing school safety. Our, one of the initiatives that the board I was on created was community dialogues, and our first dialogue was on school safety. And it was a real, we had a group of parents came and said, we want metal detectors in the school, and we'll raise the money to pay for them. The police chief came and talked about, you know, the advantages and disadvantages. And so there's a lot of things out there. At our last board meeting, or since I've been on the board, our position for director of safety, it's a half-safety and half-athletic director has been initiated, has been developed. And so Allison Robinson is in charge of that. And as a matter of fact, at the last board meeting, she gave a report on the safety initiatives and the things that's going on in our district. We've invested in the Alice training. We've invested in training of all of our staff on the importance of social, emotional learning. And increasing counselors and support staff for our students is so important. The also, the things that we're doing is not one and done as far as the Alice training, but that was a big thing last year, and this year all the new staff was trained on it. And also this year, we trained our support staff, our new nades, and on that safety also. So yes, safety is a high priority. One of the things that I've been asking the superintendent to look into is in Oxford, they use this evolved security system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Safety is one of the, is actually the number-one priority in schools. The data that was collected by the Farmington Hills Farmington Police Department has showed us that we have put some things in place that are unseen and which that are helping protect our children in the school system. I believe that having a mental check for every child and also the safety and the safety and also the comfort that if they do see something, they will say something. And I believe that's the number-one way that for us to actually address this school shooting. Because I know at least one person, when there's a school shooting or anything like that, there are someone that knows about what's going to happen, but they don't feel safe to actually report. We have to address that with every student. Actually, we're putting together, or we want to have a dialogue with the security experts, with the parents and the community, and ask the questions and tell the questions and get some answers in which that we are able to feel comfortable with our kids. Our kids are number-one priority. They need to be protected and that we need to equip them with the tools and priority and safety actually to do it.
Thank you. We will start the next question with Mrs. DePue, and the question is kind of a compound question coming from two different places. What are the most important qualities and characteristics are you looking for in the next FPS superintendent? And how can the school, how can the board support the superintendent while holding him or her accountable? And this will go to Mrs. DePue.
As far as the qualities and characteristics, I mean, you know, first and foremost, you want them to be qualified from an educational and experiential background. But I think we also want someone who fits into the focus of the community, the things that we've identified, the ability to have the equity and innovation as foundational as part of our education. Those are the things that we've said are important to us from an educational standpoint for across the district. So having someone that can embody that, that's a good communicator across different levels. We have lots of different stakeholders, right? You have families, you have students, you have teachers, you have different respective city officials and things like that. So they're going to need to be someone that can talk to all of those people and coordinate the efforts and bring the community together. As far as holding accountable, that's part of the board's role, is to be able to work with them to set forth those policies and how they enact them. So I think, again, open dialogue is really important. The ability to be, you know, quote-unquote, a team player is great, but really being able to bring someone on that embodies the things that our community wants to see in the education of our students is going to be critical.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich.
Can you repeat the question just so that I get both parts of it?
No problem. What are most, what are the most important qualities and characteristics you are looking for in the next FPS superintendent? And how can the board support the superintendent while holding him or her accountable?
This is my second superintendent search, so the qualities really are a strong leader, collaborative leader, focus on student achievement, focus on student safety, focus on innovation, communicate with all of our parents, all of our families, just strong communication skills. We have opportunities to gather input from the community for the qualities. And so one of the, one of the important qualities, I think, of a good superintendent is to be able to listen to the needs of the, and be in tune with the needs of the community and the teachers and the staff. As far as holding the superintendent accountable, the board meets with the superintendent and sets goals with the superintendent. And so it's not a, they're developed in collaboration as far as focusing on safety, student achievement, innovation, on all the things that are important that focus on our mission and our value, our profile of a lifelong learner. And the board also evaluates the superintendent. And we also meet regularly with the superintendent to have interim evaluations. It's not just a one-time evaluation, but a constant communication with the superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
So the qualities and characteristics of a superintendent, we need to have a person who is highly qualified. I don't care he or she or, or, I don't care of that particular demographic. However, what is this person trained in? What's their, what are they showing was best practices in achieving a high-scoring community and also the transparency and safety of the kids? I need, we need somebody who are very sensitive to the community because each community is have their own culture, have their own heartbeat, I should say, that we need to know how the community feels and have a dialogue that's very approachable. We need a superintendent that will give us the answers that we need, and we need to have, that hold themselves accountable to whatever their goals are. As board members, we are there to set those goals and to help with those goals which the superintendent needs to accomplish. And we need to advocate for, to have a successful board. And by doing that, that's, we just need a superintendent that would be very, very open to change and also the needs of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And Mr. Carr?
That's a topic I've spent a lot of time thinking about over the past several months. The superintendent needs a set of skills, and the superintendent needs the ability to pull together a team that can flesh out areas where they're lacking. Number one, the superintendent needs to have a solid grasp of budget and finance. We have a budget of $180 million that he will present or she will present to the board. Budgeting and financing, a crucial skill. HR and personnel, being able to select principals, being able to select assistant superintendents, correct them, advisors, that's a critical skill for a superintendent. Policy, making policy decisions, of all kinds of decisions we have to make. Cell phones, other things, hours of operation, those are the things, somebody, an understanding of how to make policy, how to be able to listen to the policies, are responsive to the needs and values of the public. Curriculum, the superintendent needs to be well-versed in curriculum, how to promote a curriculum that will help students to achieve academic excellence. Public and community relations, being able to build relationships with parents, with taxpayers, and the business community. That is in fact essential. So what I'm saying is that no one individual will possess all of that skills, but we want an individual who does have the ability to understand those skills and put together a team that can effectively manage a district as complex as Farmington Public Schools.
Thank you. The next question, and we will start with Mrs. Heinrich. What are your thoughts on the separation of church and state as it relates to schools? Heinrich.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to process this and think this. I think it's in our constitution that public schools, church, and state are separated. I think that, you know, we are obligated to follow the laws. I'm, understanding, studying about different religions is not the same as promoting religions. I think as public schools, we need to be open to all, face all religions and have an understanding of them because our community is made up of such a diverse, in our community, we have such a diverse community, and we have so many people of different face and backgrounds. And so the, the goal of public schools is to educate people so that they are educated in the world that they live in.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
So when we get into the subject of separation of religion, church, and state, there's a reason why there's a separation of that. With the, with the schools, that we should be able to be very sensitive to everyone's beliefs, even if they don't have a belief. We should be sensitive to that. And by having a person who can express their, their freedom of religion and their freedom of thought without being persecuted and without being ridiculed or being forced is a very essential safetiness, safety that we have to instill into our schools. With the, the kids need to be able to express themselves while they're able to learn as well. It's a whole makeup of the child. So by supporting whatever type of, of best practices of them actually being educated, we need to explore that and we need to promote that. We shouldn't promote one particular religion without other particular religion, but we do need to, to actually acknowledge one's beliefs and also have a, a support system for them.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
That's a critical question for us to answer. I go back to the constitution and the Establishment Clause. The constitution says that the state shall not establish a particular religion. So that's one thing that's, it becomes a guiding principle as we look at the relationship between church and state and in the schools. So we do not want to establish a particular church. We do not want to establish a particular faith. Now, having said that, there are some ethical standards, ethical values that are common to us that, across this great nation of ours. And so we want to be able to understand that. I guess as I, as I look at this issue, there's really no easy answer, other than to say we, we want to be able to allow the freedom of expression that does not affect the academic and the learning environment of students in classes. It means that we do not take a particular position to advocate or to criticize a particular faith or a particular religion. But it means we want to create a ability of students to understand critically and effectively the impact of faith on their lives and understand to respect the faith of others. That's the challenge, and I think the Farmington Public Schools can effectively meet that challenge.
Thank you. Mrs. DePue?
Excuse me. So the foundation of education does not need to be rooted in any particular religion in order to create children who can be good communicators, critical thinkers, compassionate, part of our community, and self-actualized. So I believe that keeping the church and state separate until they can learn and understand those concepts and make those decisions for themselves is a good practice.
Thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Hall. STEM education is important. How do you think the district is doing in the area, and do you have any ideas for improvement?
I believe STEM education is very critical, especially for the future of the students, for their education, where trends are going, and what industry is heading. We need to continue to provide STEM information, STEM classes, that will encourage everyone, everyone the opportunity to actually participate in STEM. As a Farmington African-American parent network member, we partner up with the robotics teams at the high school level and actually do cross-promotion to encourage these kids to actually get an interest in the STEM, STEAM, STEM programs, and also to get their feedback of how can we actually approve and improve their STEAM, STEM programs. I believe that students are telling us what we need, and I think we should actually listen to them because they're ones that's going to be in the future for that. And they need to get all the tools and everything they need in order for them to be able to be successful inside the school system that we provide.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
STEM is really critical for the future of our students. It's really critical for the future of our state. It's really critical for the future of, of our state and of our region. One thing I would say is that I met with one of the hack bot students at one of the community dialogues, and the hack bot student are very, very professional, a very effective young man. So we're not getting the support we need to engage in robotics, to, to engage in these kinds of experiences compared to other schools. And I think that's really true. Humanetics, a large company here in Farmington Hills, bills crashed on me. So actually, they're not very dumb. They cost $100,000 minimum, up to over $1 million a copy. STEM requires the knowledge of physiology, engineering, electronics, everything. I believe the district can do a better job in allocating resources to help students with a gift in that area. Not every student's gifted, but for those that have that ability, we should do that. I know we had a STEAM academy at one time that was theoretically designed to emphasize science, engineering, technology, math. I don't know that it still does, and I think it, it has elements of that. But I think my concern would be to do a solid evaluation, looking at what are we offering in terms of equipping our students to compete in a very technologically savvy world. Technology changes at, at a very fast pace and we need to be able to do that. So I would support and advocate a significant expansion of STEM education within the Farmington Public Schools.
Thank you. Mrs. Depew?
Man, do I wish that there was a focus on STEM when I was in high school. It took me a really long time and several different career paths before I ended up where I am, which is actually in science and technology. Not a place that I was promoted to go or not a place that I really knew existed until probably about seven or eight years ago, when a friend of mine said that they thought that they would, I would be really good at this because I have a great logic mind. I thought I didn't like physics, I thought I didn't like math, until I got into college and I found I love statistics, I love applied physics. I didn't get the chance to see these types of things when I was in middle school and high school. There was maybe a CAD drawing class or something like that that was offered, but it was not well-promoted. I love the fact that this is something that is becoming more talked about and more explored. As someone who's worked in workforce development, I've been able to see the hundreds of thousands of jobs that are rapidly moving into that space. And it is critical for us to set up an educational pathway for these students to be exposed and excited about these opportunities. You have kids that are naturally drawn to these types of topics, who have gifts in these areas, as mentioned, and it's amazing to see how rapidly things can change, how difficult it is for us to keep up with that, and how to marry those spaces in between so that we are creating pathways for these students to find these amazing job opportunities and be prepared for the futures that they want.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Um, yes. So how is the district doing and do we have any areas of improvement? That was the question.
Yep, for STEM.
Okay, all right. Well, we do have a STEAM academy. Two of my grandchildren go there, fortunately. My oldest grandchildren was, son was at kindergarten the first year it opened over at, um, before it moved into the Dunkle building. But they have a waiting list every year. So one of the things that, um, is a district initiative and the district needs to, and our board has been saying to the district, you need to make sure that these things are moving out into the other middle schools also, so that those opportunities are available. So equity across the district and across all buildings is really important as far as their maker space. The robotics team comes to our, um, board, every board meeting and talks about lack of space and we agree. When we set our goals with the superintendent, um, one of the goals for the superintendent was to, um, find some space for the needs for the robotics team. Um, our, our students only have one, one freshman year of high school, one junior year, one senior year of high school. And so we, we see a need for long-term in our facilities, but in the meantime, to find some temporary solutions in terms of short-term. And so that's one of the goals and one of the things that we're really pushing for. Uh, we have millions of dollars in bond money and, um, you know, the district really, um, has to look at how, how we choose to spend our money, um, as far as the improvements and, and what we can do as far as short-term in addition to long-term.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start back with Mr. Carr. The question is, how important are early childhood education programs such as Head Start to subsequent student success? Does more need to be done or more invested?
Early childhood is really a critical area for children's development. It's where they learn basic skills, it's where they earn the approaches of how you learn. You know, we're not going to teach them, uh, advanced math, at least most children will not learn advanced math, but they understand the ability of how to learn how the world works, what the environment in which they live. So I think it's really, we do have, uh, some early childhood programs. Uh, I think there's room for improvement. Uh, again, I've gone to almost every board meeting for the last two years. I've tried to keep track of all the programs that are in operation here in Farmington Hills. I do know that early childhood is critical. I do know that it lays a foundation for children developing an inquisitive mind. I do know that it lays a foundation for them to develop advanced skills. What I would like to do is spend some time with the board, with the new superintendent, with their cabinet, looking at what are we doing now and how can we do it effectively? I'm not in a position now to be prescriptive, saying this is where we need to go, uh, because that is, uh, an area of, of knowledge, uh, that I think escapes most of the citizens in the city. We know we have early childhood, but how can we do it better? And that's what I want to know and that's, that would be a prime focus if I'm elected to the board, to work with the fellow board members and the superintendent, to say, what can we do and what can we do better?
Thank you. Mrs. Depew?
So I love our early childhood program. My son actually attended there and still talks about it to this day. And I think that that's an attestation to how great it is, because he's nine. So he still remembers his teachers there, he still remembers his time there. Um, and it's just amazing to see how some of those core memories can come out of something so young for them and that that does ignite that passion for learning, right? That's the idea with early childhood education, is that you are setting foundations for them, pre-social behaviors, empathy, things like that. Yes, your ABCs, yes, you know, triangles, squares, et cetera. But for them to be excited about learning at a young age and to be able to carry that forward is critical. And it's great that we have a program that does that here. I would love to see, I know that there, and I don't know all the specifics, the new funding that's coming out from the state level, that's expanding the funds that are available for the year four programs. And so if that's something that's going to be able to be implemented here, that we could expand our program, um, and extend it to more community members so that they can take advantage of that and be ready as they go into kindergarten, prepared, excited to learn. I think that that would be phenomenal.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Um, yes, uh, I, I agree with everything that's been said. Um, our Alameda Early Childhood Center is really a state-of-the-art facility and we have Head Start, we have Great Start readiness. Um, one of the things in that building is you, when you go into the building, you can't tell the difference which children are in the tuition classes and which children are in the Head Start classes because, um, the space is equitable for all the students. And that's really important to provide those resources and those opportunities. Um, we've also instituted in our district an early five program, uh, for children that aren't ready for kindergarten, so that they have access, um, in the district for that year before kindergarten, before they start kindergarten. So I'm a big support with that. Um, I think that one of the things that I would like to see is, um, that we have more partners with parents as far as parenting programs. Um, because parents are the first teachers of children, but with today's world and the demands on families, um, you know, families need help and our school district should be a place to get help. And it's a, it's a win-win situation when the, the school district and the parents and the parents have the resources available and the support available.
Good question. Thank you. And Mr. Hall?
So, early childhood learning is, is very crucial. Children need to learn and have fun at the same time. And by incorporating fun associated with learning at an early age is very, very, very important for the development of a child's interpretation of what school, what's, what school, what learning, how to be sociable. And also with having child early learning, that we can identify certain deficiencies in which that the child may have that we need to be addressed at an early stage before it becomes harder to correct later on in school. We don't want to find out when the child gets into kindergarten or first or second grade that they may have a reading disorder. And we need to address certain things as early, we can have certain techniques and, and skill sets in order for the child can actually be able to be identified and then be able to use that. By investing in childhood and getting the parents on board, in which that is very critical for the success of a student to teacher and parent and community. So we definitely need to continue to invest in our younger learners.
Thank you. Um, and this question is like a three-parter because it comes from a couple of different places. Um, so maybe we can do a minute and 45 seconds, a little bit of extra time to answer this. Please comment on the trend of restricting student access to library materials. What are your feelings on broadening parental influence on books, textbooks, subjects taught? And are you concerned that more outside influence will limit students' exposure to and discussion of certain controversial topics? And I will read this again if anybody needs me to read that.
Can you read the last sentence?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'll, I'll go from the top again, just so you can get the whole thing. Okay, because they're pretty related. Um, comment, please comment on the trend, trend of restricting student access to library materials. What are your feelings on broadening, broadening parental influence on books, textbooks and subjects taught? And are you concerned that more outside influence will limit students' exposure to and discussion of certain controversial topics?
Can you read the third one again?
The third one is, are you concerned that more outside influence will limit students' exposure to and discussion of certain controversial topics? And we will start this with Mrs. Depew.
Um, okay. So, as an elected board member, it would be my responsibility to advocate on behalf of the community. So I think that being able to share concerns, thoughts, opinions with the board is important. That being said, I am not particularly an advocate of that, but that is my personal opinion. That does not mean that that is what the board would decide, right? So, again, the purpose of the board member is to bring the views of the community, to advocate on behalf of the community. As far as restricting parent influence, again, those things go hand in hand. It's hard to say that you're not going to listen to what the community is going to say if it's about restricting. The job is to listen, the job is to advocate, the job is to share all of those thoughts. As far as, is outside influence a concern that it would be limited? I guess so. It really depends on what the board would vote in those cases, right? So it's hard for me to really answer that, I guess, in a, in a diplomatic manner that doesn't take my own opinion into account. This isn't about my thoughts about it. I would say it's great for students to have the opportunity to understand different perspectives, different viewpoints, different cultures, things about history. Those are all really critical to the learning process. It can be difficult to have those discussions, but I think that those are really critical to the learning process and it's something that they should have access to.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Um, yeah, this is really a, a big question. So, um, when my kids were younger, I taught catechism classes. And one statement that really resonated with me and stuck with me, um, when, uh, the priest came in and he said, "Why wouldn't you try and influence your children? Because everybody else is trying to influence them." So if you look at the media, look at TV, um, you know, all social media access that children have to all sorts of things, everybody's trying to influence our children. Um, the parents are the first educators of their children and they're the first influences of their children. Okay, so, um, the, the family values and the values are set in a home. So the parents, um, hopefully have the biggest impact on their children. Um, our role as a public school district is to provide access to education for all students. Um, we're, be, our role is to make sure that all students feel welcome, all students feel safe, all students feel respected, all families feel welcome. Students have a place where they can talk to someone, there's an adult in the building that they can go and talk to. That's, kids can't learn. I mean, our, our role is to educate children, but if there's outside stress factors, then children are not going to learn. So, um, as far as the trend of restricting student access to library materials, um, you know, again, libraries, I believe all books belong in the libraries, but the, the family values and the home values, so the parents are the ones that are going to restrict that access. Broadening influence, all right, time to stop.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Banning books are, are, I would say, is detrimental to the society that we actually live in. By banning books, we're, we're robbing our children of school of thought and therefore, when we do that, we're cheaping their experience in life. However, there are some age-appropriate materials that may need to be discussed with the parents in which that, that children may not be somewhat ready to, um, to be explained in a manner in which that the parents may feel that they need to be able to do these certain things. Uh, I can recall a incident when my son was probably in the third grade and they were talking about the Huron River. He went ahead and grabbed a book from the elementary school library that said, "The Heroin Trail." He thought it was the Huron River. So with that, it, it, I explained to the, my child, say, "I don't think this is an appropriate book for you to read at this particular age level." And therefore, that particular information, I believe that should be discussed with the parents and everything else with the, uh, with the community. And I believe that with the outside influencers, you have to understand what their agenda is and what our culture is.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
This is an important question, and I think it deals with certain presuppositions that are involved. First thing, we understand that the school, the library system has a limited budget. And so we have a limited budget. My, I'm a PhD, my PhD is in research, public administration. I value access to literature, I value access to all kinds of information. The universities have largely expansive ability to acquire information that's open to all students and faculty. In the public schools, we don't have that kind of resource. We have $180 million, but a lot of it goes to salaries, a lot of it goes to athletics, a lot of it goes to buildings, a lot of it goes to buying materials. Library material should be curriculum-driven. I would believe that we should have the best library resources available to support the curriculum that's being taught within the public schools. So that would not involve, uh, restricting access to materials, provided that material is appropriate for the curriculum being delivered to children in elementary, junior high, senior high levels. And of course, the materials open will be expanded as it moves through the educational curriculum. I think part of it, we want to encourage students how to learn, how to use the library. One of the things that I did as a university faculty was teach my students how to use the library, how to use the internet. And that's what we want to do, rather than focusing on specific materials, we want to encourage the students to understand how they can gain that information even if it's not available in the school library.
Thank you. The next question is, what are your plans to make a smooth path to access and attend early college programs which allow students to be, to obtain a college degree while in high school? And this is first question, this goes to Mrs. Heinrich? And this first question, this goes to Mrs. Heinrich.
Can you repeat the first part of it?
What are your plans to make a smooth path to access and attend early college programs which allow students to obtain college degrees while in high school?
I think we already have that in place as far as early college programs. And so I think the, the most important thing is getting the information out to students as far as what's available to them. And that's, you know, communication with parents, with families, with students, so that they're aware of all the programs that they have and to find their path. And so that's, you know, the communication piece. And, you know, again, I guess it, everything comes down to economics because counselors, we have limited counseling staff. And so, you know, if we had, if we had more counselors and we had a better ratio of that, then students would have more individual attention. But I think it's more of, of being awareness and partnering with the, with the community college. And I think that coming from the State Department of Education, there's a big push in that area. And so I think that we're going to see some improvements in the future. And we'll definitely take advantage of the resources and the support that we have to expand that.
Thank you. Mr. Hull?
Yeah, so the school path to access to early college, I believe we should broaden out to early trade as well. We need to get, make sure we have a partnership with the local schools, local colleges, local trades, local unions, and encourage the ones that are not the general type that will actually are chosen for these particular programs and encourage them. I noticed that for certain demographics, they're not, a lot of kids are, are not even told about or, or pushed, or I should say, well, not pushed, but encouraged to ask us, "Hey, you need to look at taking these, the advanced placement courses, the AP classes, the IB courses that we actually offer," in which that these kids may not feel that they may qualify, may not feel like they're smart enough to be able to take on these particular courses. But we need to show them that they, that this is possible and make this a norm culture in which that we can actually encourage our kids to feel this is the norm, normal way. And, and with having counselors there, enough counselors, to actually encourage these, these kids and get them the help that they need in order to have individualized success plan.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
I'd respond in three ways. Number one is we want to be able to expand the opportunities for advanced placement courses for college credit. And our son graduated from high school with 36 hours of credit. He began with calculus III and, as a freshman in university. So part of it is being able to expand college credit courses. A second area is in expanding technical training that's available to our students. Not every student is going to college, nor should they go to college, but they need technical skills. So we talked about the hack bots earlier, being able to deal with mechanical engineering, being able to deal with electronics. So we need to be able to expand our offering in the areas of technical education, because those are skills that are going to be increasing demand in the future. Think of computer science. My nephew wanted to be an engineer, but he wound up owning a computer company without a college degree. At the same time, we need to emphasize what I call on-the-job training, internship programs, so that our current students have the opportunity to deal with internship programs during maybe their junior, senior year. So part of their time will be spent working in a specific career path, which will equip them to have a meaningful career after graduation. So again, it goes into, into three areas. One is college credit, which I support. One is advanced technical training, so that they can begin to understand the jobs that are important. And third is on-the-job training. That's what we need to do.
Thank you. Mrs. Depew?
I actually was a benefactor of this type of program myself as well, and it was something that was brought to me by a student counselor. And I went through that program while I was in my junior and senior year of high school. I really loved the opportunity. I was able to take advantage to propel myself into my college education at an early rate. And I think that this is a really good opportunity. As some of the other people spoke, the ability to work in your community and understand some of the workforce development needs that are there, how you can partner with other community development programs to create a pathway to technical training and other opportunities, I think is a really brilliant plan. I think one of the other things that comes back to the STEM question is being able to help kids understand some of the pathways that they have at an earlier age so that they can start to go in those directions. I know for me, even being part of that program, I went in, I think with a general studies at, decided, you know, going into that program, and that was difficult. I didn't really know what pathway was the best for me. Being able to give them exposure and opportunities to different educational pathways and topics at a younger age can help prepare them for being able to take advantage of those early college education and technical trade pathways.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with Mr. Hull. Academic performance in Michigan in particular, and the US in general, has been poor. FPS is improving based on the recent data. What would you do as a board member to accelerate overall performance, especially near-term in our high schools?
So with the academic scores on the FPS, I started off with the, with my three priorities, which is the achievement, safety, and transparency. The reason why I say that, because we need to make sure that our kids are physically safe and mentally and physically. Therefore, they will feel, they will start to perform and to receive instructions without any type of distractions or any other concerns that they're actually dealing with. That will follow with that, that we need to make sure and encourage our kids, what's the best curriculum for these particular students? Because all students do not learn the same. We have different types of, of modalities in which that we're accustomed to, that we can actually learn. Some people are visual learners, some people are physical or c- or cesthetic learners, some people are audio learners. So by tapping into those particular modalities in which that we can actually teach our kids, I think that will help us be able to convey that information to the students so they can be successful. All kids are, we need to invest in, in just extra, extra individualized programming for these particular kids and help them achieve what they need to achieve.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Academic achievement is an issue for Farmington Public Schools. I, at one of the early board meetings I attended, they presented a goal of trying to move 55% of the students to be performing at grade level, while at least 45% of students not performing at grade level. It begins with establishing goals. And that's why the superintendent needs to have an understanding of curriculum, and the board needs to be able to support that, to be able to look at what types of curriculum work, what types of curriculum do not work. Now, we have excellent teachers in Farmington Public Schools. I have been a citizen member of four teacher committees, one on collaborative and professional learning, one on innovation teaching, one on health and wellness, and one on the culture of equity and learning. So I, I, I sat in and just listened to the teachers. They have real concerns. But one of the issues, I think, is that goals have to be top-down. The teachers will embrace those goals once they're established. We have not seen, at least I have not seen, at any of the board education meetings, a clear enunciation of goals of where we want to go as a district in terms of curriculum and doing it by grade level. That's where we need to place our emphasis, is establishing goals that will work.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mrs. Depew?
Improving academic improvement near-term in high schools, that's difficult. You've got kids that are nearing the end, right, of what is allotted for their public education. There's so much that can lie beneath data like that, that it is really important to do some research and analysis and understand what we're looking at. Sometimes data like that is not really great data, right? It just is telling you one piece of information just by itself that you can just pluck out of anywhere and try to create a narrative around. These are real people that have real lives and a lot of different things going on. I think it's really important to make sure that the data that we're looking at is broad, it's inclusive, it's specific. It can give us information that we can actually use to create smart goals and pathways on how to reach them. I don't think we want to put a Band-Aid on something like this. And creating improvements in the near term can look at something like creating those goals, having enrichment programs. But it does require us to back up to the earlier years ahead of that, because again, you have these pathways that you're creating, right? You have excitement around education, you have ways that children are learning that need to be tapped into, you have other, like, cross-community things that need to be addressed. So the data, okay, so we're off on our reading, but that's not enough information to really create a plan and a strategy. We have to dig deeper, and we have to do that so that it actually serves the kids that are here now and the ones that come in the future.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Yes. Standardized testing is just one measure of learning. One of the things that, I guess, student achievement is something, since I've been on the board for four years, is something that we've been working on. And one of the things that the district is doing as a result of our, our board goals as far as improvement in student achievement and working with the superintendent in setting the goals, is the, the district is rolling out a strategic planning five-year district dashboard that's aligned with our, our strategic planning goals as far as the innovation for teaching and learning. As a teacher, I know that when you focus on learning, then the test grades are going to follow. And so one of the things that we're doing in the district is empowering the teachers and looking at good teaching practices and putting things in place to support teaching and teaching practices, so that we have a five-year goal as far as what we have, as far as the students, percent of high school students enrolled in CTE courses, students' profession on the M-step, on the, the ACT. Another thing we've done is we've partnered with varsity tutors for the students to provide free tutoring, because students that have test preparation do better. And so that's equal access to every student to have access to those test preparation services.
Thank you. Next question. What is your view on privatizing school services? And this, we'll start with Mr. Carr.
I think you're looking at, if I understand, privatizing school services, you're looking at transportation, food service, physical plant, those kinds of things. In some cases, it may have a role, but another case, I think we want to deal with accountability. Privatization, we may lose accountability. We want to be sure that our bus drivers respond to us, not to corporate. And so, but that means if we're going to have our transportation services provided by employees of the district, we support them. With adequate salaries, driving a bus is a full-time job, two times a day, and there's a hole in the middle when you're not working. So that means if we're going to do it ourselves, we owe the obligation to support them appropriately. The same thing for our food service. Sometimes food service can be contracted out, but the question I always have is what about the quality of food? What about the menu items that are selected? And will it meet the nutritional needs and the appetite needs of our students? The third deals with physical plant. We want to be sure that we have people in the schools that we can trust, people that will be around our students, be around our faculty, so that we can control who they are. If we contract out, sometimes we lose that, that capability. So what we sometimes do is we look at contracting out as a mechanism to save money. But at the same time, there's a, probably a cost in service, probably a cost in the quality of care that we give to our students and to our staff. So I'm not really a big advocate of contracting out for these kinds of services.
Thank you. Mrs., Mrs. Depew?
I understand the cost-benefit and the thought behind privatizing the services, but I do agree with the loss of some modality of control. One of the biggest things that I think is really important is the community aspect. So I love the fact that our bus drivers are people that are in our community. I love the fact that our lunch aids are people that are in our community. I, we moved to this area, I grew up from a young age with that type of system in place, moved quite a number of times off to that and lost that, but when my husband and I located to this community, that was one of the things that we really liked about that. And the fact that that can enrich a child's life as they go through the educational process, it seems like a small thing, but some of these kids, they know their bus drivers and they have them for an extended amount of time, their lunch aids, people that they see, the janitorial staff and things like that. And you're also giving jobs to people that are in your community as well. The likelihood that someone in a contracted service maybe lives down the street from you is probably lower than if you have someone who works directly in your school and you might get the chance to know them. I kind of love that aspect. I think that that's a really great part of the community. I do understand the cost-benefit, but I do believe that those values can outweigh some of that.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Yes. Our business is working with children, unlike corporate America, and so children are, are what our focus is. As far as the services, all our employees, from our bus drivers, our support staff, our kitchen staff, everything has interaction with students. By keeping those services in-house, we have better access to background checks, to screening, to knowing who is coming in daily contact with our children. And we also have opportunities to provide training. The district this year, as far as school safety, all of the noon supervisors and playground staff was trained in as far as safety, school safety, Alice training and interventions, and also providing those important social-emotional support opportunities for students. The district did try resourcing out janitorial services, and it did not work out well, and we went back to now we have a hybrid system where it's, all the supervision is in-house. And so as far as the economic benefits, you have to, again, you have to look at the cost of things, but as far as knowing who is in contact with our children, I think is that what separates us from the corporations.
Thank you. Mr. Hull?
So when you're doing a, when you're doing privatizing the school services that, that we're accustomed to having in-house, we lose the essence of what the school district is by hiring folks that, that don't share our same values. We have several incidents in this Farmington School District that it came out of contract houses. So when we're, when, when school systems are outsourcing their services, they're running the risk of the people that they hire, do they still have our same values? Are we, are we having the same people that, that we know, you know, Mr. Johnson, the custodian? And Mr. Johnson knows all the kids, know what, who are, how are they, and, and another set of eyes? Now, when you put a stranger in this particular role, people don't have that relationship with them. So although the bean counters or the accountants will say, "Well, this makes physical sense," it may have, but, you know, are we looking over profit over people? And that's how I feel about privatizing our services.
Thank you. Next question. We'll start with Mrs. Depew. Who are you endorsed by?
No one.
Okay. Mrs. Heinrich?
I'm endorsed by Teresa Rich, Mayor of Farmington Hills. I'm endorsed by Terry Williams, School Board President. I'm endorsed by Richard Lerner, CEO of Farmington Area Goodfellows. I'm endorsed by the Michigan Education Association.
Thank you. Mr. Hull?
I'm endorsed by the Democratic Farmington I'm endorsed by the Democratic, Farmington Hills Democratic Club. I'm endorsed by Vicky Barnett. I'm endorsed by Samantha Stuckoff. I'm endorsed by, by city council member, I'm endorsed by many, many, many people in the community in which that, you know, Jackie Bollaware, she's endorsed me, many, many folks that I failed to mention right in front of my head, I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Carr?
I've been endorsed by a number of individuals that recognize my experience and leadership in the area, been endorsed by state representative Samantha Stuckloff, by former mayor Vicky Barnett, by former mayor Dr. Ken Massey, by every member of the Farmington Hills City Council, Michael Bridges, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Randy Bruce, Jackie Bollaware, John Aldred, William Dwyer, Valerie Noel. I've been endorsed by the Michigan, the teachers, the staff, and the transportation workers of Farmington Public Schools, the local MEA affiliate. So, I've had a lot of endorsements, but I think because I've built a relationship with individuals over time, showing I have a commitment to our neighborhood, a commitment to our schools, and I have the skill set necessary.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Mrs. Heinrich. What can the board do to foster a positive culture and climate with the school community?
That's one of the goals since I've been on the Board of Education, and so I think communication is the big thing. We instituted the community dialogues. We reach out to the community members to find out what kind of topics that they want discussed and brought to the community dialogue. What can the board do? Be responsive to emails as far as replying. The board president replies on behalf of the board, but the board president also seeks input for the board, from the board members, and the view is represented by all the board Going out and participating in community events, I go over to the FAPN, Farmington African American Parent Network, every Saturday, and help out by tutoring the students that are there. I'm just, but I think, I think the big thing is listening and being responsive as far as being involved in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
So, to create a positive climate, we have to keep one thing in mind. The only, the only thing that we need to keep in mind is the children. What are we doing for the kids? Everything else doesn't matter. If you're getting into any type of disputes or discussions, how's this benefiting the kids? And that's why we're here. That's the reason why there's a, education board was formed, because a lot of the parents want to make sure that the kids are put first. With that saying, we need to always be open and approachable by the public, by the community members, on what needs to happen in our school system, what they want to see. We need to continue to form relationships with the, with fellow board members in which that we may not agree on a lot of things, but we can take something from each person and find a, find the right way how to be able to create policy for the children. So, having other outside influences, or maybe having other things, other agendas, that's not part of being a board member.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Part of our function is always to put children first, and that's one goal that we have. But once we do that, we have to look at building relationships with each other, so that we are accountable to each other and we're accountable to our public. I think one of the strategies that would really enhance that within the Farmington Public Schools would be, they have three subcommittees, personnel, budgeting and finance, and community relations. Much of the discussions occur in those meetings that are closed to the public. I can't go. I've asked several times, can I go to the subcommittee meeting? And they said, no, that's where we make decisions. They report them out to the board. Well, then, we're not really accountable. So, I don't know what's going on, and that's where the real work is done. If there's tension, if there's disagreements, I believe one of the best mechanisms to open up quality, accountability, and working relationships is to shine the light of the public involved, so that we can attend those meetings. We're not going to be members of the committee, so that people could come and listen as the board talks about budgeting, as the board talks about policy decisions, as the board talks about community relations. Then they begin to see the importance of everything that the board does relates to the public. So, I believe that we want to build that relationship of trust among the board members, and we demonstrate that we have that trust by opening our subcommittees up to the public so they can see how we work together. That's the challenge.
Thank you. And Mrs. Depew?
I believe that engaging with the community to create a culture of trust is critical, and part of that is transparency. That is, the feedback that I've gotten from people that I've spoken with quite extensively is that they don't, aren't able to see behind the doors, they aren't able to see what's happening, they don't understand what's happening. And some of that is about educating people about what the process is and what the role is. I think sometimes it's like a box, right, and they can't kind of see what's inside with it, that makes them uncomfortable. And the less information that they have, the less they feel like they can trust you. So, I think engaging them in the process to understand what it is that the board does, what the policies that we have, how we make those decisions, things like that, I think is really important, because that just elevates the understanding and helps them understand just what the process is and empathize with the day-to-day kind of procedures and things like that. So, the transparency is really, really critical, and that helps to feed into the trust, and hopefully it can build from there.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm looking at the time, and so this is going to be the last question from the audience at this point. And they want to note, do you support the millage voters are being asked to vote on in November? Why or why not? And Mr. Hall, we'll start with you.
So, with the millage, I support the millage due to the fact that with this millage running out, that we need to make sure that our funding is put in place in order for us to continue as a, as a functioning school district. These, this millage, they provide a lot of services in which that if it's taken away, that it's possible, that the school will equate to running the school for fifty days that if we didn't have this particular millage. It provides many of the services that we're accustomed to, and that with the very small impact to our, to our taxes and for the, for the reward that we receive, is, we can't measure it. So, with that, I do, I do agree with this millage, and I do support it.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Yes, I support it because I believe the millage will provide about, what, fifty, fifty-five percent of the operating budget for Farmington Public Schools. So, we need to have that, that millage in place. One thing to understand, to think about the millage, is it's a renewal. It has to be voted on as a new, a new millage, but it really does continue support at a level that is consistent with historic, historic values in Farmington Hills. We need that, because it allows us to maintain quality schools, housing values, jobs, and provide, more critically, it provides a quality educational opportunities for our students. That's why, that's why I support it. I think it's an integral part of having a viable school district.
Thank you. Mrs. Depew?
I do believe that millages help us achieve above and beyond what some of the standards are that we have, and will give us the opportunity to continue to improve on the things that are important to our community, especially around education. So, I support.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Yes, I support the millage. The millage is a renewal. The millage really, twenty-seven percent of the district's revenue, forty-nine million dollars, comes from this, this district millage renewal. So, it's not an increase in taxes as far as the per pupil, the per pupil funding allowance. It allows the district to continue for the full per pupil funding allowance allowed under Proposal A. So, it's really important as far as fiscal responsibility. All the things that we want to do in our district and all the things we're doing, school funding is moving in the right direction, but it's not where it needs to be, and it's something that I support as far as on the local level, to do everything possible to guarantee that we have the full school funding that's allowed under the laws.
Thank you. That concludes the time for questions. Candidates will now be given one and a half minutes to make a closing statement in the reverse order of the opening statements, beginning with Mr. Hall.
The reason why I'm running, because I care about the children. I have currently three kids, three children that attend Farmington Public Schools. What I've learned over the many hours of dedicated volunteer hours that I have put into this district, is that we're not that different. We all want a place that our kids feel safe, that our kids are high-achieving, and our kids have transparency on what the board is doing. I take many, I have many discussions with many parents through my network that I belong with, and they want to be able to advocate for their children. And with the, with the climate of outsiders and even sort of school thought in here, that we had to listen to our kids, because they're the ones that's going to be in, that's going to receive this education. And I have a pulse on the community, and this is what they want. This is what they, they need for their kids, and I'm here to help make that possible and keep that possible with the, being a board member of the schools.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Thank you. My experience as parent, grandparent, teacher, and school board member has given me a wealth of knowledge to draw upon in serving as a leader and moving the district forward and raising student achievement, meeting the needs of all students, and making Farmington Public Schools a premier school district. My priorities, priorities are a safe environment for students to learn, adequate resources to meet the needs of every student, and support for teachers to focus on teaching and learning as they empower every student to explore and develop their passions and interests and prepare them for a future beyond Farmington Schools. During my four years as a board member, I have worked collaboratively to move the district forward in developing the profile of a lifelong learner, that is, to provide every student with equitable experiences. It's been a long night. To become a compassionate community member, a resilient problem solver, an empowered communicator, a strategic communicator, and a self-actualizer. As a parent, I would say, as a teacher, I would say to parents, your child, my student, we're on the same team in helping your child to be successful. As a school board member, I say to you, our children, our parents, our community, our staff, we're all on the same team, working to ensure that Farmington ensures every student with a safe environment to learn and adequate resources to ensure that they are able to develop their passions and interests and to prepare for their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Depew?
Why me? As I mentioned earlier, my education, work history, and passion for the cause all uniquely qualify me to take on this role, but that's not why I'm here. I am here because I hold the best interests of our children and our community in my heart, and I am invested in putting my skills to work for all of us. I am a great listener and advocate. What does that mean? I know how to communicate and collaborate with compassion. I'm a great problem solver. I am research-minded, and I excel at making data-backed strategic decisions. I have a background in workforce development and public administration, which means that I understand how to ensure effective execution of public programs for the benefit of our community. I hope that you all will choose to support me and my dedication to serving our community by electing me to a seat on our school board this November. Thank you.
Mr. Carr?
As I reflect on the past, I've attended every board meeting, almost every board meeting for the last two years. I serve on four teacher committees. I've invested the time to understand and to gain insights into Farmington Public Schools. Earlier, I talked about the skill sets required for our superintendent. I believe some of those skill sets are important for a board member as well. I understand budgeting and finance. I have developed and administered budgets in excess of eighty million dollars for the municipal government. I understand HR and personnel, the importance of how to search for appropriate personnel. I was on search committees for university presidents, provosts, and deans, so it's really critical. I understand policy development. I was a president of the Missouri Municipal League Policy Committee, developing public policy of the entire state. So, I understand the critical nature of developing policies in a local school district that affect the lives of nine thousand five hundred students and all the families here. I talked about curriculum. I understand curriculum, the importance of a curriculum to help students learn in terms of accreditation, in terms of understanding the needs of various academic disciplines, math, science, English, social studies, art, in terms of community relations. That's my life. I live in the public sector. Somebody said, what's your hobby? I said, my hobby is local government. I deal with schools, I deal with that. That's where I find excitement, that's where I find my skill set to be, to be, to really come into play. So, I love local government, I love schools, I love education, and my goal is to put our children first. That's what I want to do. I have the skill set necessary to work with the current board members and the new board members to build a team, so that we can really move this district forward. We have challenges, and I have the skill set necessary to do that. So, I ask for your support and your vote for me, for school board. Thank you very much.
The League of Women Voters would like, in Farmington Hills Coha, would like to thank the audience, the candidates, and TV 10 for making this forum possible. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates and other candidates on the ballot, visit forvote411.org. When available, the video of this forum will be on LWVOA.org website. The video is copyrighted to the League of Women Voters and must be used in its entirety. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to women and men over the age of sixteen. Remember, early voting begins October 26th through November 3rd, or you can vote at your own precinct on November 5th. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Good night.